Golden, human, say the prayer.
Let's bow our heads. Father, we thank you for this night that you could come, we could come together, Father. We just pray for the leaders of this city, God is to make decisions, Father, tonight. We just pray for each one here, that you'll just bless them, Lord, and you'll bless this meeting in the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Alright, has everybody read the minutes from last meeting? Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion.
David? Second?
My second.
Delmar? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Have you got a chance to review the bills? Is there a motion to pay the bills?
My second.
Delmar?
My second.
And Rick? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Golden, did you have any comments, or are you just here observing?
Just here observing.
Alright. Alright, I am getting better as following a gym. Okay, did Peggy leave a report or anything?
Uh, no, I thought she might leave it, Mike, I guess.
Did Mike leave a report with you, Roger?
No.
Okay.
He did. He did.
Michael might've come up and give it to her, though.
Uh, yeah, he did just say that, uh, he will get with Peggy, uh, to work on the budget of what he needs. Said he could put it in the first month, so she'll have.
And then there was that one. I got it somewhere. The, uh, thing on the water that. The natural resources. The inspection that was done in twenty-three is all good and everything is done.
I mean, I know it's meant to use, so I put it in your package, so that you would know.
So that's all good?
All up to snow.
Alright, Roger, how you doing?
Good. I'm good.
It's in Kansas. That's not many miles, is it?
No. Hard to find. It's a pretty rare one, yeah, it's pretty nice, yeah.
So we've got twenty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Yeah, standard six-week transition or no matter.
It's on that.
Is that what's budgeted?
Can't even get a six-week new one.
Right, 'cause we spent seven thousand one hundred and eleven already on that truck, whatever we got.
So we only have twenty-two eight eighty-nine?
Yeah, and so, okay. If we spend a little more, I mean, originally there was thirty thousand budgeted period for a truck. So if we spend anything more, obviously, this could be a budget amendment. Peggy said anything over twenty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine, I don't think she anticipated thirty-five thousand either.
Well, that's with the trade of the trucks, so, which, I talked to Peggy about that and.
About thirty-five thousand?
Yes. So the only thing we'll have to pay for is twenty-five thousand. Correct, yeah. Got twenty-fives all we have to pay. Yeah, we're getting.
So twenty-five thousand's what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Because we're gonna get ten and a half out of our old truck.
Yes.
Okay, so twenty-five.
Yes.
So that's basically going over about twenty-two hundred dollars.
So, yeah, that's the only amount the budget will have to be amended, is the difference between twenty-five thousand and twenty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine.
Okay, so closer to about twenty-one hundred.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve the transfer of funds to cover this truck and to give Roger the permission to purchase?
So, to purchase this and to amend the budget?
Yes. David? Rick?
David and Rick, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll buy you a truck, Roger. Well, the streets look wonderful.
Yeah, I agree.
And I was telling Roger that when I was at the last regional planning meeting. Chris was asking me about how stuff was going and the roads and stuff, and he wants to come over sometime and have Roger give a talk to some of the other communities and how to fix their roads and on a budget and.
I think that's how I'm gonna do a lot of them next year.
So, that was kinda nice, you're getting recognition for.
Back in the day, they used to, hey, didn't the city of La Belle come down here and do some roads years ago?
I couldn't take that.
Like I said, if we don't fix them, we're gonna lose them.
Yes. La Belle came up and talked to him about dinner.
About doing their roads?
Several halves, actually.
Twenty years I was working.
Oh, there's Peggy?
Christmas lights.
Christmas lights, this'll be what we're gonna be working on for a while. Uh, we've got them, we're gonna start putting them up ASAP.
Do it while the weather's good.
We're gonna do it now. We're also gonna put a tube in C N R. They bought the tube and they've got it, they're right in. We'll probably put it in tomorrow and then we'll probably put the lights up as soon as we can. And we got a different type of lighting, she got new lights. Instead of the strip, they got to put on, you don't have to throw on the tree limb. You can just go like this, come back around, go like this, come back around, go like this, so that's gonna be very handy. That's gonna save hours. Yeah, gonna save a lot of time. Are you taking them off?
Do you guys have to decorate that tree?
The hill? The hill, yeah.
And that's called the friendship tree or something?
Magic tree or something, I don't really know.
Magic tree.
Yep, magic tree. So what color is that truck? I forgot to ask.
Strawberry yellow.
Strawberry yellow.
Strawberry yellow is. Beautiful color.
It's white.
That's curious.
That's his wife.
Your overtime is looking good.
Yep.
You guys have really made a great strides with that, and we appreciate that.
We've been cleaning up the back lot, it's changed a lot, I mean, we've really cleaned it up a lot.
The day I was in.
I thought I was in the wrong place.
It's nice to have all the helpers on, they're doing nice.
And we got salt, we got all that stuff already on hand, don't we?
Yes, sir.
So we're all good for all that.
We've got a lot of sand, don't we?
You're, you're good.
I don't think it's gonna be an icy one, but I think it's gonna be snowy.
I think it's gonna be snowy.
That's what everybody says.
And we won't let the ice melt to it until it's time, I mean, we won't waste it, we'll wait until the time. Here's the truck, Dot.
Oh, yeah.
It's got snowplow on it, so it's.
It's ready to go?
It's, yeah, it's.
Cool.
Yeah. And it's got, it's, it's kinda different, it's got, when you turn the lights on, when you run the snowplow, all the lights flash, it's just, for safety reasons, it's pretty nice.
Did you get your truck?
Done.
It's done?
Yesterday, Friday, last Friday.
Police truck's back up here?
Will be, tomorrow, when I, I'm in St. Louis all day.
Are ya?
Yeah, so I'll, uh, tomorrow, a lot of stuff I'll put out.
You got anything else?
No, the roads were done, we got a little oil left. Uh, next year, they're probably, I'm gonna probably double seal them, it's still thousands cheaper a block than what we was doing. So, we're gonna, I plan on probably really covering fifty blocks next year. And making them smooth, so that'd be nice.
Well, they're really nice once you get done with them.
I'll probably start down here at the Catholic church in C N R and probably smooth all that up first thing in the spring. So, that's kinda what's gonna happen next year. Yep, hopefully. That's about all I got, I mean, that's it.
Thank you.
Things are going good.
Appreciate it.
Boys are working good, it's all going good.
You guys working out really good.
Yeah.
Alright, so go buy us a truck and sell us a truck.
Yeah, who's that?
Be ready for snow.
Yep, let her come.
Yeah.
It's all I got.
Alright, Peggy, do you have anything?
No.
Okay, um, there was a difference, and you said you talked to her about the difference in.
Yeah, I told her what it could, that what it.
Like two hundred dollars, we'll have to amend the budget. Okay.
So, yeah, they approved.
Alright. Ryan?
Mark?
Your turn.
Thank you, Mark.
You bet.
Any questions regarding the report?
Poor Ryan. I said the day before the, the person was found, I messaged him, said, do we need departments to deal with homeless or illegal people? The next day, he says, you jinxed me.
I told him, I was like, I don't know.
I've never had to. The state has pretty good guidance with dealing with illegal immigrants, and you can't be a sanctuary city and all that, so I think we're probably pretty covered under that.
Really?
But it's something to think about.
Nope.
I didn't?
I didn't see it in my pocket. Yours under the papers you're acting with, mine was.
Oh, I didn't, I don't put them in the packet, they'd be in the paper, you get.
Yeah, you just set yours aside when you sit down. Looks like down here, south of Marks, they put a building up.
I see that. It's on skid, and I don't think we require a building permit or anything for anything.
Referring to the.
Unfortunately. Off that's true.
No, down here.
Off that.
More parishes. More parishes.
They got rid of both. Unlicensed vehicles.
Dogs. Get rid of it, they get all the building.
Yeah, they had to move the building in.
Yeah. I was like, oh, man, they're making some progress getting them out of there, I went by this morning.
Nice building, I'm jealous.
But that, on, on, it's a nice building. Um, but that's the one that's referred to the prosecutor. All the paperwork's in on it, so.
Well, I just wish you did something during the month.
And this ain't everything, I don't put everything on there.
No.
How are we doing on some of those cars?
I've still got two more to prepare and send to the prosecutor.
Good deal.
One, the van you talked about, it's gone, and on Marion, it, maybe small one. The van had the hood up on it, it's gone, then up the street on Marion, that one's gone. I still got one more to get rid of, but. There.
Progress.
Hell, it's not enough.
Yeah.
Um, another thing on here, Margaret, we had budgeted last year for a vehicle. And Margaret got in contact, or got contacted by this USDA community facility on a, um, seeking if we'd need any vehicle grants or anything. So, uh, I mean, we didn't purchase anything this year because, you know, if we can try for a grant next year, you know, we'd be better off to, rather than to buy something used to get a grant and buy something new for the same amount of money. So I think that's what Margaret's need to vote on, um.
And we're required to have a public hearing before submitting this, and so, we can have it at our December meeting. It has to be in the paper at least ten days ahead, uh, so we can have the public hearing at the December meeting and have everything ready to submit to USDA for next year.
Okay.
If the board, if the board wants to move forward with it, I mean, if you don't, if you're not interested, why?
Well, if we can get a grant, and get something better for less money, that's kind of a.
So do we need a motion?
Need a motion to.
We'll make a motion, have a public hearing. With a public hearing and apply for the screen.
Okay.
Public hearing at the December meeting?
Yes.
To, and start the grant process. Okay, so we got Dot, is there a second?
Yes, I'll say.
Rick? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Alright.
How many miles is your truck, I want it now?
Mine, I think around a hundred and seven thousand. And, uh, the blue truck, it's got around seventy.
Yeah, close.
What's a new one, you call it?
A new truck?
Depends on what you're looking for.
I got, I got a couple bids, they're out in my truck, the Ford police truck, I think it's around like forty-six, something like that. That's one fifty.
That'd get you one like Carl.
The Dodge is a little bit cheaper, huh?
Yeah, it'd get you one like Carl.
Oh, you're gonna talk about, that's gonna be a sixty-five thousand.
Is it really?
Oh, they're high.
I know he said, when he got that, that GM or Chevy agreed to not change the interior of that for twenty years, so they can move all their stuff. So that's a thousand dollars without the.
Yeah, the taller, that's, that's a little too great for, for a.
So, are we going to sell one pickup?
Oh, well, I imagine we would.
Well, in our application, it was to know.
Get rid of one or the other, damn it, or both of them.
Yeah.
In the application, it wants to know how many officers we have in our police department, and then it wants to know how many vehicles we have. And then we have to have a narrative as to why we need this grant to buy a new vehicle. So, it might be strange that we have one officer and two vehicles.
Yeah.
Check the place, Emily and I'll go and check it. But the city guy had to have it. I'd say let's sell it or something.
Yeah, I'd just sell it.
Get some money, sell it.
Yeah, I got a new one in place while we got, we don't need it.
Yeah.
And they'll bring halfway decent money, right now, I mean.
What's your opinion on?
One's a two-wheel drive, right?
Hmm?
One's a two-wheel drive, but a four-wheel? It'll bring decent money.
What's your thought on?
Which one you prefer?
I mean, I'd be fine with that one.
So would you suggest us sell yours with the more miles or the other?
I know we're gonna give more money out of the less mileage.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
But then after we get the new one, then we could sell the other one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, if we don't get the grant, we'll, we'll probably have to take another route with, you know, maybe something used or, you know, like a highway patrol, what we had planned for this year. Until we got word of a grant.
Yeah, you just gotta get with your name after wood.
But I think we'd be, the money ahead, probably just sell the, the blue one's older, but it's got significantly less miles.
Could we take that truck that we sell and put it back into like the police fund for, toward the.
Acquisition of the, you know. You know, 'cause there's gonna be a, you know, 'cause I don't think the lights out of any of them's gonna fit in the new one, so there's gonna be some expenses for some lights and sirens and boxes and stuff. You know, that we could use, you know, from the sale of the truck.
Okay, well, so they voted and said yes to proceed?
Yes, we got that.
Sorry, let's see, find out.
Yeah, it'd be a good deal. Good deal.
Thanks, Ryan.
Yep.
Alright, now we have two building permits. Standing echo, and that's supposed to go in a garage.
Where you gonna put it at?
Go look at it.
Huh?
Go look at it. The floors are ready down, you know?
I don't know.
The lot next door to us?
Yeah, right south of it.
You know how you come up, it's at?
Yeah.
Right, when you like come up that driveway, it's like right there, so it's back towards the house.
It's not running an alley?
It's pushed all the way.
You're off the alley.
No, it's nowhere near the alley, you know the lot that's south of my house, between us and Harley?
Yeah, if I can come around and he can turn and goes up the hill there.
Yeah, there's no alley. There used to be a house there. Yeah, but we're not building where the house used to be, it's like, not quite in, not in the corner of that, but it's like close to our house, because we're gonna use it for a garage. Pretty excited about it.
I make a motion to approve this.
And Delmar? David and. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And we have the second submission from Caroline Fragg. She wants to build another building. It's like, is that like a two?
Yeah, fourplex.
It's a fourplex?
Yeah.
Oh.
I thought it was like two, because it looked to me like, if you count the bathrooms.
Well, two, they already got, that's the two, the original, already there right now.
Right, no, I was saying they're, they're, um.
The floor plan is there.
Their floor plan is there, and it only has two bathrooms, so I just got to sharing that with the floor plan.
Two bathrooms, two kitchens.
And there's only one building.
Yeah.
Did you get floor plan?
Yeah, here's the floor plan. Yeah, there it is.
And it's a different layout than those others.
Yeah, this is one building, this is gonna be four, see, those buildings are only two.
Two.
This has got four.
There's only two bathrooms.
There's two kitchens.
They're stacked on top of each other.
It's a two-story?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Two-story? Does it say that in the application?
No, it doesn't say that.
But they can stack it high as they want.
Well, it usually says.
Yeah, but now we had some idea this one be a fourplex.
It's gonna be a two-story.
It certainly doesn't say anything.
No, it doesn't. And by counting bathrooms, it only looks like two. I count bathrooms.
That's the full plan, excellent, I love it.
And there's no garage in this.
Nope, they're not gonna do the garages this year, 'cause they just pile junk.
It's a different.
Oh, really? Yeah. Me, dear?
Okay, they're full.
On top of each other, it's definitely different. So nice you would hear, Rick.
Yeah, no, I went down and looked at it and everything, Mike's went down and staked off for the sirloin, everything is, so everything's good.
Well, I drove by and saw the, where they kind of, you know, straightened out the plan a little bit there, like, but the way that I get that it was.
Well, he does wanna do, get another one, basically, another one. More time.
Alright, so, is there a motion to approve?
I'm motion.
Rick?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, on the termite control. Um, I think we ended up.
Didn't I give you some information on that?
Yeah, that's in, that was in our packet.
Did you check your packet?
It ended up, um, Nemo pest control. So he came and inspected it, and she suggested that we just keep an eye on the area and come back next spring, 'cause the termites are not active right now.
Yeah.
So to treat it, you're not gonna gain anything by treating it now, and he suggested we waited until the spring to do something with the. One guy wanted two thousand dollars to come do a quote and treat it, and then, yeah. So if they're not active, why, why spend two thousand dollars to treat something that's not active?
If you wanna have it where they're active, he gets treated.
We now know these different companies, we can contact them all in the spring.
Didn't you say you guys use Nemo?
Yeah, we use.
Pest down at C N R and have good luck with it.
Oh, C N R does.
So, that's where we're at on the termite stuff, we'll look into it in the spring, when they can see it, they're still there. Any questions, anything, you guys wanna do anything different with that?
Nope.
Yeah. Okay. Bill number seven thirty-one. Proposed ordinance seven thirty-one to put an issue on the April eighth ballot. April eighth, twenty twenty-five ballot to decide whether to forego municipal elections for six years if the number of candidates filing equals the number of seats up for election in accordance to section one one five dot one two four. R S M O. Y'all had a chance to look at it?
So, you get, the idea is that if nobody's running for any of the older, there's, there's no contest in any of.
Right, yeah, they're uncongested.
Or if it's the off-year and it's the mayor and the alderman, why then we don't have to pay for a municipal election?
So if you're the only one that would refile for your seat, we don't have to have an election, 'cause you're gonna get it regardless. So we're just saying if we have three seats open and each one only has one person filed, we're not gonna do an election because it's a waste of money.
And it's only good for six years.
And then we'll have to revisit it.
They have to do that again.
You done the letters, go. Sorry, sorry.
If there's any other issue on the ballot, obviously, you do the regular municipal election.
Yes, or if more than one person signs up for a specific seat.
Yeah, right, for any, any of the. And, and of course, it has nothing to do with this year's election, I mean, it'll only be on the ballot this year.
A lot of boards do this, yeah, it's called, they put out what, what's called, Marlene puts out a notice of non-election.
Right.
And it basically lists the ti, you know, the seat that it's open, who's going to fill it, and then they publicly post it, you know, they put it in the newspaper to kind of notify the public.
It's probably pretty costly to put on election, isn't it?
Uh, yes, it's over a thousand dollars, yeah.
In some cases, it could be like ten thousand dollars. You know, we're lucky because we're just small, so we would just pay for our ballots for the people of Edina piece, but if you're like a county, like the nursing home or the ambulance district, or.
Oh, yeah.
That has a, you know, the health department, the library, they're in for a bigger piece of the pie because there's more ballots.
Right.
So we have to.
So we need a motion.
Three times?
Oh, yeah, did I put my little?
Yes.
Chee-chee'd in there. Yeah, so, I'll make the motion for the first reading by title only.
Okay. And is there a second?
I'll second.
And Rick? Okay. All in favor, Dot?
Yes.
Delmar?
Yeah.
David?
Yeah.
Rick?
Yes.
And?
Absent, absent.
Absent, absent. Okay, the second reading in title only. An ordinance setting an election on April eighth, twenty twenty-five for the qualified voters of the city of Edina, Missouri to decide whether to forego annual municipal elections for six years if the number of candidates filing equals the number of seats up for election in accordance with section one one five dot one two four R S M O. Is there a motion to accept the second reading?
I'm motion.
Rick? Second.
Delmar? Okay. Roll call vote, Dot?
Yes.
Delmar?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, shall the bill pass? An ordinance setting an election on April eighth, twenty twenty-five for the qualified voters of the city of Edina, Missouri to decide whether to forego annual municipal elections for six years if the number of candidates filing equals the number of seats up for election in accordance with section one one five dot one two four R S M O. Is there a motion that the bill shall pass?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? David? Okay, last roll call vote, Dot?
Yes.
Delmar?
Yes.
David? Rick?
Yes.
Okay. I declare that that bill has passed.
We're gonna sign it while, while we.
Alright. I've been checking into grants of different stuff too, like there's fire stuff you can get for equipment and training for police, fire department. Looking at grants available for the clubhouse, we're doing that. And it's a lot of stuff to go through to figure out what you can get and when and what all we have to do, but I am trying to find out.
It's out there, you just gotta dig deep enough.
The municipal league's website is the best, 'cause it, it lists all of them. And there's the rural community fire protection, um. We just can't do more than one.
At a time.
Block grant, so like we couldn't do the.
Bar and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we don't wanna do anything to mess up the demolition grant, so we're gonna wait till that's done. And then we will, have, we haven't heard anything back on that.
It's, it's time, I would think.
Yeah, I would think.
Keeping our fingers crossed.
Yes. Yes, um, I did get to go, I did go look at our new pumper tanker truck, that is nice. I'd be able to do a lot with that. Um, and Margaret, we talked about the handbook, do you wanna send out copies of it?
Yes.
We worked on revising the employee handbook. Margaret's gonna make copies and send out, so hopefully by the December meeting, we can make any changes that we need to, so we can get it in place January first.
So, yeah, I'll make copies and write in the blue book rooms here.
So, there's not a lot of change in. We just added cell phone. And there's a few things.
Because it, it just referred to telephones before and so.
Oh, then, yeah.
Basically just updated.
Would you put the overtime?
Yes, the overtime is in there.
That's it, yeah.
Didn't really take away, I mean, took away nothing, um, but just kinda, I think the only thing was the vacation, we, we had talked one time to. Maybe speed up how they can get a little more vacation instead of waiting eight or ten years to get more than two weeks.
Right.
I agree with how they work.
Yeah.
Yeah, even the fact of, yeah, having to wait a whole year.
Then they get a max, once it gets so high, then a max out.
Yeah. So that, might take a look at that when you get it to see that, but if there's anything we need to change, we can change it at the December meeting and, and vote on it, but I'd like to. Be able to get it in place January one. But other than that, I don't think of anything else. Um, do you guys have anything you wanna talk about?
Let Scoop talk to you about the dry hydrant you shut there for water at the lake.
Yeah, I got it, I never, I've been too busy, that's what I need to do.
You talk to me about it?
Yeah. I got that on my desk.
What's a dry hydrant?
It's when you need water really fast, you go up to lake, you go to the second of the lake.
Pipe that goes out into the lake, and all I do is pull up the side of it and I hook.
So it works like a.
Truck up to it.
One in here, except it's not coming out of the water supply, it's coming out of the lake.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and they're looking to put some of them out there for the fire department?
Yeah, we have the grants, it's, it's a fifty-fifty grant deal, but. I'm trying to, need more for it.
I did talk to Alan. Somebody from the fire department to show up once a quarter, you know? Instead of just when they want money.
More of the fire department to actually fill that out to, to get it.
Yeah, just so.
I just gotta get on it.
Kinda keep up with what they've got going on.
No, you just gotta present it and do it. Yeah.
We did it in Bering Lakes.
All right.
You paid for it. It didn't handle.
Just another day, they did sell the other truck. The money came to the city and the city passed it on to the fire department.
Okay, okay, that, that ambulance truck there, was it?
When they replaced the pumper truck, did that rid of the other truck?
Yeah, that fire truck that they had setting out there for sale, is that what we're talking about?
I'm not sure what they sent, they sold it through.
There was a truck that was sitting outside the building.
That old ambulance looking.
Yeah.
Yes, and so, yes, they, that was titled to the fire department, but it was sold through Big Iron, and so. Big Iron is set up through the city, so the check came to the city, and so then I had to turn that over to.
The fire.
Fire department, because it was their truck.
Yeah.
Their truck to sell, yes.
All right, is there any?
Have we heard anything on that block grant to tear down?
Not yet, we should be getting something soon. Should be something, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Can we go back to citizens' comments?
Sure.
Safe Stop was great. We didn't get an exact count, but we are estimating between four and four fifty, just on the kids' side of it, that's not including. All of the adults and people that came with them, so it was a wild success. And, um, the way Safe Stop will work going forward is it will be a trunk or treat unless it is raining. Snowing or below freezing.
Then you'll move it inside to the.
Yeah, you know, it's cold just about every year, and we got a lot of calls, you know, is it still happening and. Uh, just, you know, pushing up to the last minute, wondering it's happening unless it's raining or below freezing. That's kinda what we decided at our last chamber, but it was a wild success. This is the first year it really feels like we're kind of back since the pandemic, so that's exciting. And then not Sentinel related, and I really want this to hit the minutes. Is we are bringing another sunshine training here to Edina. It will be on January twenty-ninth.
Right behind.
Sunshine Law Training here in Edina on January twenty-nine at one thirty in the afternoon at the community center. And this is the earliest stages of planning for it, so, um. Unless I get a wild response from people who wanna actually show up and eat lunch, we're planning on just starting the training at one thirty. And I'm hoping that will help us add another morning training with our trainer, we can take them to another part of the region and do a training. At ten, and then we'll be here at one thirty, uh, so. And I will be sending out notices to all of our boards, asking them to have it on their agenda, read my letter out loud, and then document it in their minutes, and of course invite. You and everyone, tell your friends, it's free, it's being put on by the Missouri Attorney General's Office. So it's the, uh, training, you know, that's, that you've been to that training is a big deal, um.
Like a first responder, or was it just?
No, it's, it's sunshine law training, and it's mainly geared towards publicly elected boards. Who don't get sunshine training through, um, the municipal league or aren't part of, you know what I mean? So it'll really be a benefit to our smaller towns and our boards that.
It's a good, good training.
It's a good thing to know.
Not quite the things that gets out there about the sun, sunshine law and what's legal, cause I know when I went in June last year, I was like, oh.
What you don't know can hurt you, so it's just, yeah, pertinent to know what the law is, um. It's, the training lasts roughly an hour and a half.
It's, it's a good protection for yourself.
Mm-hmm, and having the Attorney General's Office representative out doing the, you know, their training, um, and. I don't know if you've gotten your paper yet, but the sunshine law is in the news.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and it's, so anyways, please, um, encourage everyone you know to.
So you said about an hour and a half training session?
Mm-hmm. And I think when Casey was here, I think it went two.
Yeah.
So I mean, I'd give that, you know, ninety. Plus minutes, um, for training, and what's great about having an Attorney General's Office representative there is the Q and A.
Yeah.
You know, you learn almost as much from the Q and A person of the training as you do from the training.
And if you add it once, it never hurts to get a refresher, cause things change.
They do, it's, some, the sunshine law can slightly change even a little bit, um, not quite every year, it's not what we've been seeing, that there have been. Changes every time legislature goes through, you know, you never know what's gonna get tweaked.
Worth a lot more than a, is a lot cheaper than a lawsuit. All right, any, anybody else has any comments? All right, we're going to take a motion to go into closed session to discuss legal actions. Causes of action or litigation involving public governmental body and any confidential or privileged communications. Between a public governmental body and its representatives and its attorneys. So do I have a motion, David, motions, is there a second? Delmar, all in favor?
I, uh, roll call verdict.
David?
Hi.
Rick?
Yes.
Dot?
Yes.
Delmar? We are in closed session.